For the priest and the flagrant.
I pledge allegiance to the God of our nation, our nation's people, and to the Lord God. We do not forgive nor forgive those who have sinned. One nation, under God, in the good will of the Lord.
Okay, pursuant to the new public meeting act that's sent over to the South Jersey Times, we're notified of this meeting. It was also posted in the municipal building and also in the township wet news. That's right.
Mr. Tuxman?
Here.
Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
Mr. De Cesare?
Here.
Mr. Leo?
Here.
Mr. Felici?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here.
And Chairman Greedner?
Here.
Okay, in the absence of Mr. Gaetano and Mr. Garfalo, we'll see our alternates, Andrew Hamel and Justin Felici. All right, minutes of the previous meeting, gentlemen.
I make a motion to approve.
The motion to approve now second. Second by Richard Glieses, all in favor.
I oppose.
Any extensions? No extensions. Okay, first on our agenda tonight is Dennis and Vincent Travassio.
Travassio.
Travassio. Mike, carrying in order?
Yes, notice has been properly given, yes. Mr. Travassio.
So, we're looking to, for a land variance where 150 is required and we have 130.9. We have a letter that my son will read. Good evening.
One second, did you swear them in, John, or did I miss that?
I did, no.
Right your hand, please. Your testimony about the testimony you're about to give?
Yes.
Take your name and address for the record.
Dennis Travassio, 112 East Louisville Avenue, Wildwood Crest, New Jersey, O-8260.
Vincent Travassio, address 112 East Louisville, Wildwood Crest, New Jersey, O-8260.
All right, so it's a vacant lot, undersized lot that you want to build a home on, is that what?
Correct, yes.
Just to make it simple.
All right. We're going to write up a short statement. Good evening. This letter of intent is in support of my request for a variance to the minimum lot frontage requirement, particularly Section 253-107 of the Franklin Township Code. The intention is to build a new single-family residence with a two-car garage in the widest portion of the lot, and thereby meeting or exceeding all other dimensional standards. The lot currently has frontage on Clearfield Avenue of 130.9 feet, where 150 feet are Lot 1802, Lot 34, is along a dead-end street on Clearfield Avenue consisting of single-family homes and vacant lots. Lot 34 was originally approximately five acres, but was subdivided in 1982, creating lots 34 approximately 3.78 acres and 35, one acre. Each lot had a street frontage on Clearfield Avenue of 130.9 feet. Lot 35 was sold in 1983, and a single-family house was built. At the time, bulk requirements were a minimum street frontage of 125 feet. In 1984, zoning regulations were changed to 135-foot minimum lot frontage, thus making Lot 34 non-conforming. In 2007, a similar scenario was created on Clearfield Avenue when Lot 38 was subdivided to create lots 38 and 38.01. However, the new lot created had only 90-foot frontage on Clearfield Avenue, and they were successful in receiving a variance. Lot 34 has street frontage of 130.9 feet on Clearfield Avenue, although the lot technically has 794.52 feet of frontage along the unimproved portions of Elm Avenue, the length of the property. Since it is only a paper street, the property is essentially a flag lot in its functionality. From Clearfield Avenue, the property at 333 feet opens up to 261.81 feet wide. The lot overall is 794.52 feet at its longest point and 463.5 feet at its shortest point. The total lot is 3.78 acres. Our intention is to build a single-family home on the widest portion of the lot. As noted in the sketch plot, the house will sit 400 feet from Clearfield Avenue and not in the narrower portion of the lot. The proposed building will be situated on a lot of 3.78 acres. The minimum bulk requirement in the RA Residential Agricultural District is 1.5 acres. All required setbacks will be maintained. Aside from the lack of frontage, the lot and the proposed dwelling will meet all requirements for a single-family home in the RA District. After subdividing the lot, the zoning requirements were changed through no fault of the owners. There is only one property which abuts Lot 34 that could potentially sell four feet, however, they refused. Additionally, they refused to purchase Lot 34. On the other side of Lot 34 is a paper street, Elm Avenue. Should the township decide to vacate Elm Avenue, we would have the additional frontage, and a variance would not be necessary. Clearfield Avenue is a street within Franklin Township consisting of single-family homes. Lot 34 is at the end of Clearfield Avenue, abutting a paper street. Another property on the street, 374 Clearfield Avenue, also considered a flag lot, had their variance approved. Our intent is to build a single-family home of comparable size to enhance the neighborhood. What I would ask the board to consider is the fact that, as requested, the new house, even with the variance, would conform with all other bulk requirements. The fact that the southeastern side setback of Lot 34 abuts a paper street, and thus creates no undue burden on any neighboring residents. The proposed style and structure of the house is in step with the existing neighborhood, and the proposed project would be an improvement to the neighborhood and result in an overall increase in property value and tax base created by improvement. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully submitted, Vincent Travassio.
Very good. Does Elm Avenue end at Lot 12? The paper street?
Elm Avenue butts a property that comes in on Grant Avenue, so it dead-ends into the back of a property.
At the back of your property it dead-ends.
Correct.
Did you ask for a vacation of the street?
We did not. And then the other end of Elm Street dead-ends into the power lines. So if the street were vacated, it would affect four properties, and that's it. I don't think it'll ever be developed, because again, it goes into someone's property on the north side, and on the south side, it goes into the power lines.
I mean, they created the flag lot when, I assume when they created it, you were able to build a home at that time?
Correct.
On that front.
Correct. And originally, we thought we were going to be grandfathered in, but apparently, the solicitor reviewed it and found that in 2007, it changed again the zoning.
How long have you?
We have not, we're in contract.
Dave, any contributor, any comments on this?
Thank you, Chairman and Board members. We did a report dated April 1st, that was our second report for this. The application is complete. It is exactly as the applicant stated, there's one variance associated with this, and that is lot frontage 130.9 is the existing lot, 150 feet is required. And if that street was vacated, Elm Avenue, they'd certainly have the frontage they needed. That would be a logical way to go, is to vacate that road. It goes nowhere on this side of the street.
Makes sense.
Yes. But other than that?
Even after tonight?
Even after tonight, absolutely. But as the applicant stated, it meets all the other metrics for the zone, setbacks, everything, pretty straightforward. We heard testimony that they tried to buy additional frontage and were denied. I have a question, that the proposed driveway access is over 400 feet long. Is it your testimony that the driveway will be suitable for emergency vehicles?
Yes, I believe it's 12 feet wide and a clearance of 14 feet high.
That's correct.
And it'll follow the code as far as the base that's put down and whatnot.
Right, that's where I was going, very good. Yes, you'll be subject to grading plot plan by the township as part of your zoning permit application, and it will have to be a stable base for that driveway. Pretty easy. The only other thing that I noticed is the neighboring lot, Lot 35, has a significant portion of the driveway on your property, so that's something that you and the neighbor are going to have to work out.
Right, we'll talk with the neighbor and see if we can come up with an amicable solution.
In paragraph eight of my letter, the photos that were submitted as part of this application show a tractor trailer body on what appears to be that this property.
It's Elm Street.
It's in the right-of-way of Elm Street?
And it's been there at least 20 to 30 years.
It's not on the subject property?
No.
It's not shown on the survey, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I've had the property surveyed, and it's not on the property. There's a tree at least eight inches wide in front of this tractor trailer, just the trailer part is there. So, and the license plate on it, I believe, expired in '89, I believe is the date.
More than likely, it's from the other adjoining property owner, based on the aerial maps, there's some other tractor trailers on the properties out there.
A whole bunch of stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not on this property, so.
Any other questions for the applicant or to our engineer?
From an engineering standpoint, it's very straightforward.
Then we'll open it up to the public. Meg, I urge you to open the public, pushing by Dan De Cesare, second by you, also little in favor, I oppose. Anyone from the public like to be heard regarding this application? This will forward, those like to.
Good evening.
Great evening, please.
Bob Burgess.
About the testimony you're going to give?
Yes.
An address for the record?
Robert F. Burgess.
Cynthia A. Burgess.
330 Clearfield Avenue.
Joanne Moore. 306 Clearfield.
So, the requested variance is over 13% less than what the requirement is. There's no other house on that street that has that kind of a setback. All the houses on our side of the street are almost in a perfect line. The same is true on the other side of the street, except for one, which is closer to the road rather than setback further.
You're on Clearfield?
Yes, sir.
And where are you in relation to that? You're across the street?
No, no, we're adjacent.
You're out front, you were part of the original lot?
No, no, we're Lot 36.
Lot 36, okay.
So that, that's one thing, that's not, I don't think that's acceptable. This constitutes a substantial impairment to the neighborhood by having that in back. The variance would negatively affect our privacy, because we have a house in the back that can look up in the front, and it would negatively affect our property value because of that. The variance may also affect our water supply, since we only have a shallow well. We don't, we really don't want to see the front of the house, you know, out our back door, especially when all of the rest of the houses are all in line. And the location of the septic system, you know, strips away buffers between us and Moore's, between the new house and Moore's. There's going to be a lot of trees that have to be removed in order to get the septic system in. The variance would not conserve and preserve environmentally sensitive land back there. There's a stream that runs through there, just off of that property, and I don't know which direction it is, but the back corner of that property, there's a small stream that runs back there, so I'm going to assume that's going to be, has to be considered Also, this property and our property and Moore's property is home to a federally threatened species, namely the eastern indigo snake. We see the snakes that come out of the woods looking for a meal, I have a picture of one. They move through the grass and they go about their business. So, that's not, that's not a good thing. So I guess the bottom line is that we oppose the variance and respectfully request that the board deny this variance.
What big is your lot?
It's five acres.
You're five acres, then how long have you been here?
We've been, oh yeah, I'm sorry, we've been here since 1987, 37 years.
But you do realize that that was an approved lot when they subdivided it?
Yeah, I get it, but it's not now. So, you know, then why did they change that then if it wasn't, you know, I get over time things change, but in this case, it changed to the larger, and it changed to the larger for a reason.
All right, any other comments?
I was never contacted and never refused anything. If that's what I understand that gentleman said, nobody's ever contacted me, other than the letter that I got, but they never talked to me about anything. The other thing is, I have lived on that property for 28 years. The privacy back there is very important to me. That's going to be gone, because I get it that this house is going to be 66 feet from what it's going to be in my backyard and on my deck when I go out there. They're going to see me, they're going to be, I'm very unhappy about it, I really truly am. And as far as the driveway, I didn't put that driveway there, I booked that, just as it was. The other people did that driveway, so now they're going to take my land, I feel like they're going to take that away, and I'm going to have a little tiny piece to get up the driveway?
You're Lot 35?
I am. I'm very upset with the septic tank going there, right in the corner of my property. What if that fails? Like, you know, maybe it won't, what if it does? Who's cleaning that mess up? Me? I just, I just don't want it back there, and it's not equivalent to the houses on there. My house is 1,050 square foot, how is that 2,300? How is that matching? Two-car garage. And then, can they put a fence up? So now is a fence going in the middle of my property? Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
I'm really upset about it. And plus, the animals back there, there's wildlife back there, it's not going to be now, and the fact that you're cutting a tree down.
I just don't like the fact that there's a breach, a violation of your own township's variance, and it seems to be okay. I just don't understand it.
And that's why there's a zoning law, because there's gray areas.
A breach is a breach.
Everything's black and white, so that's why we're here tonight, to listen to everybody and try to make a fair conclusion.
Just to want to clarify, so Ms. Moore, you're on 35, so your house is closer to the road?
It is.
And then yours is further back from hers?
Yes.
Yes, but not to the same extent that that new house is going to be.
So you're sort of like in-between as far as the setback, she's closest, they're back further, and they'd be back further. So I know you're against it in general, but you mentioned the location, but you're not saying you'd rather be in that more narrow strip, are you? Because that would be closer to?
No.
Okay.
No, because that, the other flag lot that was referenced before, that's what they did, and the original plan for that was to put that house out behind there in the larger portion of the flag, and the neighbors then, I guess, came here and talked to everybody and said they didn't want it setback that far, so they decided, they accepted it to be put in the, you know, in the small portion of the flag lot. And in talking to those neighbors, they all regret that decision to allow that house to be put on that flag lot. We're a pretty tight little street down there. We, you know, we watch out and take care of each other.
What if they moved the house back? Would you be opposed to it then?
Well, it's already back, it's 60s.
Well, there's a lot more room to go back.
66.
Well, then they're going to, the closer you get to that, to that back corner on there, the closer you're going to get to that quote-unquote "wetlands." I just, I don't think, you know, and then the other thing is the size of the house. That proposed house is larger than both of our houses put together. So I just don't think that that, it's appropriate for that particular portion of our street.
All right. Any other comments? If not, we'll see if there's anyone else. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard regarding this?
Can I just mention one thing?
Sure.
Our approval, if approval is granted here this evening, that is only the first step, and some other approvals that need to be taken before building happens. So if there's wetlands and wetlands buffers, that's a DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, Capable Land soils, or Gloucester County soils, you know, there's other checks and balances further down the line. It's, so, just so you know.
Go ahead, you want, you have comments?
So the property, there is no wetlands there, we researched that with the state or the Wetlands Commission. There is a dry creek bed, not on my property, that we plan to purchase. The house that, 330, is actually set back almost as far as we're looking to set back. And then, he actually looks into the back of Lot 35, which is House 306. So it's basically the same situation, if we were to build the house, we would have the same view, he's actually closer from his view than we are. If we moved into the closer portion of the lot, we would not have the 150 feet, we're still only at 130. The variance that was approved for the other flag lot, the gentleman stated that the neighbors agreed to move it forward, and then they regret that decision, meaning they should have kept the house towards the rear of the lot, is my assumption from that. As far as the well and the septic, the well hasn't been, it's been placed by the survey engineer, and the septic has been placed by the survey engineer. And that's, you know, if, if you move the house back further, it would create a longer driveway. The size of the house, it may appear big because it's a rancher and not a two-story home. So the footprint is definitely going to look bigger, even though the square footage is probably smaller than most. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard?
Rebuttal?
One more time and that's it. The big business is what happened.
Okay. No, the, it is not a dry creek bed back there, there's water back there, I was back there this morning. And what the neighbors told me about that other flag lot is that they would have opted not to have anything built there, not to move it up to the front or move it in the back.
The neighbors weren't hearing any testimony?
No, I, I know.
That creek bed's not on his property.
No, no, but it's, it's close enough where wetlands could affect it.
He just said that there's no wetlands, he had a testimony.
Well, what's a stream? What's running water?
We're going by his testimony. I'm not in my backyard when it rains a lot.
Well, what's my testimony?
We're taking your testimony into consideration.
Okay. Well, I'm telling you, there's water running back there, and it runs back there for much of the year.
Okay. But that's where the other approvals would come in, right?
Yes.
From the IP or whatever else, right?
Absolutely right, yes.
Again, it's not on the property we plan to purchase.
And that's for another.
Right.
Anyone else like to be heard regarding this application? If not, we'll close the public vote. I make a motion to approve. Second by Richard Glieses, all in favor. I oppose.
I just have one question, I think we have to ask the question, because there was conflicting testimony about asking about buying or selling the adjacent property, because the other, they indicated they were not given an opportunity to do that.
We've, in the borough code, they required or asked us to send them a letter, a certified letter, which they received. In that certified letter was a letter requesting them to either purchase the property or for us to purchase some of their property. That was never returned to us, so we considered that a refusal.
You don't submit those letters with the application?
Yes, they were submitted with the application.
Oh, the, the burning property letter, okay.
They were, you didn't receive them?
Yes, they're in the packet of the letter.
The certifies came back unclaimed, or they came back with?
That certified came back as delivered.
Delivered.
The 330 came back as refused.
I did receive that letter, but I wasn't sure what to do with it. I wanted to get an attorney and talk to me about it. I wasn't sure how to answer it. I didn't know, what land do you want to buy? You're taking, I only have an acre. You have three and a half and you want more? I didn't know what to do. This is new to me. So I went and I talked to an attorney about it. I have it, I'll mail it back to you, if that's what you need, but I didn't know what to do.
Yeah, I mean, her lot's already undersized, so she'd be creating a more of an undersized lot if she's.
Correct. She sold it, she's not going to sell, that's for sure. Right, right. She had five.
If they bought it, it would be the value of the lot with an approved house.
Okay. And Lot 36 already sits behind Lot 35, the dwelling, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Lot 36 sits behind Lot 35, the dwelling? Right, looking at the?
Lot, um, yeah.
Well, not direct, yes.
They were, it was one lot at one time. If I can approach, I'll bring a different.
That's it. I trust. Are there any other comments?
Questioning, so just looking at the aerial photos and the three lots in question here, 36, 35, and 34, they all appear to be heavily wooded, correct?
Correct. Our intent is to cut as few trees as possible down.
For the construction of the hallway, the driveway?
So the driveway, and then the clearance for the driveway, and then the area of the house, the septic, and again, our intent is to leave as many trees as possible.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, Andy, nothing else?
Just look at the distance between the homes and how much vegetation is present.
Mike, do you have more comments? Dave, you have your, your comments? I don't. There was no, no letter from the environmental, which is what I got. Or no one? Any comments from them? There's no comments. Okay. All right, you heard the testimony, you heard the public, the neighbors who are against it, you heard the potential owner, what he wants to put his house on this flag lot that was created many years ago. What you're, you're deciding. What you, uh, you decide?
I'd like to see that, that, what's that, on the street?
Favorite street, right?
Favorite street is vacated and that was solved a problem.
And what a native variance.
Can we force the township to vacate the street?
You can't force the township to vacate the street. I think you have to take the application as it is. Certainly could recommend that that be done, taking into consideration that if it were done, it would be conforming.
That's the thing, if they have the street, then it's a conforming law. Okay. Sorry. That's not something that's in front of us at this moment.
I don't think, Dave, you disagree, we couldn't compel, and, no, I agree. An application as presented shows you that there's that street, that if it were vacated, it would solve the problem.
Did you make a motion that day? No, I didn't make a motion. I just made a statement. Okay, sir, we need a motion to, you approve it or not?
I'll make the motion to approve it under the stipulation that, as it says, minimal cutting down of trees. Of course, you're gonna have a lot of roots to chop through, so we do have to follow all those for septic and clearing and whatever.
All right, motion by Richard Glasis, by Justice Philistine. Paul, we take a motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a comment? Do you have a comment?
Mr. Hetchum?
Yes.
Mr. Glasis?
Yes.
Mr. Decezary?
Yeah.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Felizi?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
And Chairman Greenberg?
Yes, I mean, I just, it's a shame this lot was created this way, but it's a flag lot that exists. If, if they can't build a house on it, what are they gonna do with it? It's a worthless piece of property. I think you need to pursue the, the tree vacation. I believe that the township will probably be in favor of that.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, CD twenty-four oh four, name of Karen Salerno.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman members. My name is John Alice, Attorney, Licensed to Practice Law in the State of New Jersey, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I'm here representing Karen Salerno. Regrettably, Ms. Salerno suffers from migraines and had a little bout of one today, so was unable to be here. Present, though, two people. I have Tiffany Morrissey, Planner, Licensed in the State of New Jersey, to offer testimony because we're here on a use variance, which I'm gonna talk about in just a sec, and also Mr. Salerno, who's well acquainted with the matter and involved in all these matters. So, again, to remind the board, it's John Alice. I'm here on behalf of now Karen Salerno and Nick Salerno, and this involves three forty-nine Delsey Drive, known as Block four seven three-two, and it involves three lots, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. It's about one point five three nine acres, and we're here respectfully asking for a use variance to permit what might be described as a storage center or storage units. Smaller installation, probably about ninety to one hundred units. Of course, any relief if the board was to favorably view the application would be contingent or premised upon us returning to the board with a site plan. So more precisely, we're here requesting a use variance contingent on site plan review. Now, with the board's permission, I'd have a couple of people sworn and I'd get into the application, so you don't want to really hear too much from me, but you do want to hear from our witnesses. I would-
I swear whoever's gonna give testimony-
That sounds like a great idea, so this is Ms. Morrissey, this is Mr. Salerno.
Your right hand, please, you swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give.
I do.
Steve, I, I know one of you's a, you're a professional, you're a man, right? So state your name and address for the record.
My name's Nicholas Salerno, seven fifteen Kings Highway, Mickleton, New Jersey.
And now, Ms. Morrissey obviously is able to speak for herself, and you're gonna hear her in just a second, but I just wanted to note, do you need me to colloquy her? In other words, are you comfortable with her as a professional planner? Is she known to this board?
Yes, yes, she is.
Okay, then you accept her as a professional planner. I'll be quiet and I'll let her tell you a little bit about what the application is all about.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? So we're here tonight because we're requesting a use variance. We did make some, before I get fully into the application, we propose a self-storage facility on property in your Malaga Village zoning district. It's on Old Delsey Drive. The property's one point two acres. The self-storage facility would be approximately sixteen hundred, just over sixteen hundred square feet of new storage space, and there is a single-family dwelling that was proposed on the property to remain as a caretaker and office space. After reviewing your engineer's report and realizing that that created additional variances, we decided that we don't need to necessarily maintain that single-family home, so we'll remove the single-family home from the application, eliminating that variance, so that all that is before you is the use variance for self-storage facility with an office space inside that self-storage space and no onsite manager living there twenty-four-seven, but an employee that will address those aspects of the application. So that kind of minimizes the, the variances that we were requesting as identified in your board professionals' report. This property is in your Malaga Village zoning district, and while commercial uses are permitted in this zoning district, they are only permitted when they have frontage on either Delsey Drive or Harding Highway, Route forty-seven and Route forty. This street is Old Delsey Drive, which basically connects Route forty to Route forty-seven. It's not a local residential-type street, and it has various uses on the property. In order to orient that with the board, and I don't have it as a large map, but I do have a exhibit, and I guess we can call it Exhibit A-one, if that's okay?
Yes.
A-one. It is a aerial map, a screenshot of the Google Earth view. Today is the five seven twenty-four. So that's the official copy, and I'll pass this, there's kind of them, so I think we have enough for everyone. So on this, highlighted the subject, there should be enough for everyone. The subject property, there is a red dot identifying the site, as well as a black marker that highlights what is the approximate property lines. We have enough for everyone. So I wanted to share that with, with the board because I think it helps orient what we're asking for and kind of minimizes, in essence, the impact of asking for a commercial use on a property that is where only residential is allowed in the Malaga Village zoning district. So when you look at this property and you look at the surrounding area, to the right of the property on Old Delsey Drive, closer to Harding Highway, is a church and a church parking lot. And that property has frontage on Harding Highway, so that property is allowed to develop in a commercial or non-residential fashion. To the left of the property on Delsey Drive are three single-family units, then there's New Road and the Dollar General. Those single-family units, while existing, are also allowed to develop as commercial, permitted commercial uses because they have frontage on Delsey Drive. Across from the property on Old Delsey Road is the diner and an old abandoned building. Those properties also have frontage on Delsey and Harding Highway. So the property in question is surrounded by properties that have frontage on the highways that allow the commercial use, and they're in the commercial area of the village section where Delsey and Harding Highway intersect, or Route forty and forty-seven. This is where the McDonald's and the CVS are, you have your Wawa, you have a shopping center, a pizza parlor, the Dollar General in the area. Behind this, we have Richmond Street and some homes on Richmond Street that back up to this property. And if you look at the map and you look at Old Delsey Drive, you can see it's not so much a commer, a residential street, unlike Richmond Street, which is also in Malaga Village, but more of a residential street, where it makes sense not to permit commercial uses and only permit those residential uses. In orienting you to this location and what we are requesting, I, I started with that because when we have a use variance, we have to demonstrate that there are special reasons advanced, that the positive criteria under the municipal land use law are advanced, and those positive criteria include a finding that the site and the use are particularly suited to one another and therefore would promote the general welfare because of the unique characteristics of the property and the unique characteristics of the use, making a good marriage or a better zoning alternative for that property. So, starting with the orientation of where we are and how Old Delsey Drive is utilized, not as a single-family home residential community street, but a street that people use to avoid going through the traffic light if they're going right on Delsey Drive and trying to bypass the light there, providing access to other commercial properties. What we are proposing on this property is a self-storage facility. When we talk about commercial uses, there are some commercial uses that are extremely high intensity, like your McDonald's or your CVS or your Wawa. Those uses are permitted in the Malaga Village zoning district. There are other uses that are less intense, such as professional offices, banks, and childcare centers or government buildings, which are also permitted, but they're still more intense than a self-storage facility. A self-storage facility is a low-intensity use that has very little activity on the property. A self-storage facility, as we propose here, would be about ten feet in height for the buildings. It would have limited visitation to the property, and, and it would not have a high turnover of traffic, so you're not gonna have a lot of activity on a day-to-day basis. Essentially, with self-storage, you put your stuff in there and then you come get it when you need it. Occasionally, you might go in and out throughout the time that your stuff is there, if you need things, if you're remodeling your house, or if you just downsized and you're organizing yourself, or if you're moving and you need to go get things that are in storage, but you're not there every day in and out. And, and that plays out when you look at traffic patterns associated with self-storage facilities. Self-storage facilities have a very low trip generation, and trip generation is a vehicle generation. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I don't want to play a traffic engineer, but what I do want to indicate is that I did look at the Institute of Traffic Engineers manual, which tells you how many cars are associated with the type of business that is on a property, based on studies that they've done throughout the United States. And the ITE indicates that this type of use at this size, on an average weekday, would generate twenty-four trips. Trips is in and out, so that's about twelve vehicles a day. So it's a very low-intensity use, just a little bit more than a single-family home. A single-family home generates about ten plus or minus trips per day, based on the same standards. So we, we are compatible to what a single-family home would generate in terms of traffic and not so intense that it's overburdening the area. Let's explain what self-storage facility is and a little bit about this property. So we have proposed three separate buildings. They are all single-story buildings and about ten feet in height, and this is just a conceptual layout. We're probably gonna flip the buildings around and I'll explain that as I get through the testimony, but we would have on a single building along Old Delsey Drive, you'd have circulation around the two larger buildings with basin and landscaping on the property. And what I'm gonna hand out now, and I don't know if I have as many copies as I did from the aerial, are example of self-storage facilities. So I'll call, the first exhibit I have is A-two. This is sample buildings for self-storage, not exactly what we're building here in terms of the color, but just to give you an idea of the extent of what a self-storage facility looks like, which I'm sure we're all familiar with, but just in case. Give you one for the file, and then I think we can share it up here. And I have another example, which is one that you, our, Mr. Salerno has constructed in Mount Euphrain, and this is more the, the style of what we're proposing. This is A-three. And I'm gonna include with that also A-four, which is the second page, which is an aerial view of the same facility, which you can see the layout is similar to what we have here, so I'll make that A-four. Pass those out and go through and explain that. So we're looking more at these neutral colors, not those bright colors that I just shared with you, more of the-
I, I think these comments were better suited for when you do the site-
Right, well, we wanted to give you this as an idea-
I think what you're gonna concentrate on is why you think this is proper use for that piece of property.
Well, and part of that is to understand how low of an intensity use this is and how it's not-
Aren't they open twenty-four hours a day?
They can be, yes.
How do they get in? Do they get an automatic gate?
There's a gate, yes.
Is it gonna be lit up?
There will be lighting on the buildings.
There's all presidential houses on Richmond Street, that's the back to all their homes.
Correct, and I understand that. So that's what's gonna bring me to the, the flip side. We did talk about that in reviewing your engineer's report, and I was gonna do this later, but I'm gonna do it quick now because we're talking about it. We think it makes more sense, we have a single-sided building where you only enter from the inside, so that it's the back of the building and then we'd have landscaping behind that, so it would kind of act as a screen instead of putting that single building to the front, moving all of the activities so that building acts as a screen and we can landscape behind that as well. So that would, you wouldn't have any traffic, so on the initial plan, and this would be A-five.
What are the buffers for?
The buffers are, are-
Buffers are, buffers are required between this and any residential.
Right.
And buffers start at fifty feet and go up to one hundred and fifty.
So bare minimum fifty feet?
It's required, and we would have to address that at site plan. We would not necessarily be able to accommodate the fifty feet if we built these three buildings, but we would provide an intensive buffer in terms of landscaping and fencing and orientation of the buildings, which would provide a, a better screen for the surrounding area. So let me go back to the special reasons and more about the use and why it makes sense and the particular suitability. So in terms of the particular suitability and what, what makes us a good marriage on this property, is that this property, while it's not on Harding or forty-seven or Route forty and forty-seven, it's on a road that connects those two roads together. It's not a road where you typically want to have single-family dwellings. There is a single-family dwelling existing there, but it has a different traffic pattern. And that single-family dwelling is basically surrounded by other non-residential uses and properties that, while they're not fully developed, could in a sense be non-residential uses. We think it makes sense on this property because of this unique location, and as you can see on the aerial that I provided to you, while we don't specifically touch Delsey Drive, the corner of that property is just off of Delsey Drive, where it butts Old Delsey Drive. So we're not too far akin from where that area is. The proposed use on this one point two acre lot is a use that can be done in a fashion that has very little impact because it's not like we're putting a convenience store or a doctor's office, or even expanding upon a church that has more traffic generation associated with it. We're proposing a, a very low-intensity use that has very little people in and out of it during a daily basis. It has less traffic than a substantial commercial use and really not much more traffic on a daily basis than a single-family home would have. There is still a single-family in and around the area, and we would have to screen and buffer those existing uses. The single-family or the residential that's on Delsey Drive, I believe, actually starts at twenty-five feet because they're not, they might be existing non-conforming since they front on Delsey Drive, but then again, it could be fifty feet. We would have to address that through site plan application with the board, and we believe because of the type of use that's proposed here, it would not have such a substantial impact at that point in time because of the intensity development.
You don't even know if it's a change in the area or true, right?
We would have to do a site plan. It, it could be that we need, with the new stormwater regs, we did look at it, but it could be that the building sizes have to decrease in order to accommodate the stormwater. But before we go into that full design, we wanted to get a general overview of the use, so we can see if the use is something that the township would consider in order to see if it makes sense to do that additional design. But yes, with the new stormwater regs, there is the possibility that there will be changes to, to the layout, although we did look at it prelim- to the layout, although we did look at it preliminarily. So, in terms of the positive criteria, that particular suitability aspect, that this low-intensity use on this property that's not truly in a residential neighborhood backing up to a residential neighborhood, yes, but not in that residential neighborhood, is a unique property, and fitting it with a use that is more akin to a non-residential use and not a residential use, one that is a very low-intensity non-residential use, promotes that particular suitability and promoting the general welfare. There are additional purposes of zoning that I believe would be advanced through this application as well, and that includes purpose C of the municipal land use law, which is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Now, recognizing that we would have the controls of the ordinance, what's important to note here, and while I wanted to show those buildings to you, is that these buildings are going to be approximately 10 feet in height. They're not going to be substantially tall buildings. So it's a very low-profile structure. It's not something that's going to create large shadows on the surrounding residential properties to the rear. It's not going to be overburdened. It doesn't need high visibility from the other highways, so these low-profile homes help add that adequate light, air, and open space without being extremely bulky. Additionally, I believe the application promotes the purpose of zoning to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of uses according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. When you look at the surrounding area and you look at self-storage facilities, there's not many to choose from. When you go and you Google "where are there self-storage facilities?", there is one in Franklinville, but the others are in Vineland and Waymouth. There's not many in the area. And that's important to note, because when you review what self-storage is about, 1 in 5 Americans actually use self-storage at some point in their life because of downsizing, because they're moving, because they don't have enough space. It is a use that is important to your everyday life and should be approximately located so that you have access to it. Franklin Township is a very large township, so there is very few opportunities without leaving town in order to find a self-storage facility.
We have a newer being built, Frank...
Yes, yes. But there's additional need and location and demand. So like I said, 1 in 5 people, and what's existing now and with what's being built, there's still going to be a need and a demand for that. Providing self-storage in a location that's where you go on a daily basis, and not out in the remote Netherlands of a town, a lot of times, we would permit them in our industrial zones and push them to the outskirts of town. But providing them, if I'm going to go to Wawa and get coffee, and I want to go, my wife said I needed the Christmas decorations this year, I can go get them while I'm getting my coffee at Wawa, or whatever I need in and out of that storage facility. So you're located near that commercial core, that village area, where all that activity is, so you're not taking away from where you're already traveling. And it makes sense, this provides that sufficient space for that in this location. And that also advances the purpose H of the municipal land use law, which is to encourage the location and design of transportation routes which promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location of such facilities and reach which result in congestion and blight. And again, because Old Delsey Drive isn't a traditional residential street, it's really, I mean, it has Delsey in its name, so it's almost inferred that Delsey and Harding Highway are appropriate for commercial. And when you look at the uses that front on this property, on this street, they all have an ability to have some type of commercial, so now you're left with a single-family residential unit on an acre lot that is surrounded by commercial uses. So I believe providing a location where people can easily access the site and get to their storage facility is appropriate and makes sense for the positive criteria. So, for those reasons, I believe that there are special reasons. I believe this is a unique use for this property. I believe it is a different type of use that minimizes the impact of other commercial uses would otherwise have greater impact. I believe that it makes more sense for this type of use on this property, given the location of this property on Old Delsey Drive and the surrounding properties and their land uses. In terms of the negative criteria, is there a substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance or the master plan and the Medici standard that goes along with that? There is, self-storage is permitted in other areas in the township, as you know, and it's permitted in your industrial areas and your business zone, if I recall correctly. However, this site is in your Malaga Village District, provides that opportunity to be close to your commercial services, so that you, as a resident, have the ability to easily access your storage unit. It's on, again, because of the unique features of the property, makes sense in this location. Your master plan was reexamined in 2011 and 2013, and the goals and objectives that are in your master plan from 2004, slightly modified but still remain, include to promote orderly growth within Franklin Township, with an objective to concentrate new development in existing villages like Franklinville and Malaga, or new hamlets to be developed in a designated receiving area. Here, proposing development in the commercial portion of the village area makes sense, and I believe promotes that orderly growth within the township by putting a use of this nature in an area where other commercial uses are located. Additionally, to maintain a safe and attractive residential environment, and includes an objective to provide an appropriate range of public services to meet the needs of current and future residents, and I'm going to go with that public service aspect of it, while what we're providing isn't a public service, it's a service to the current and future residents to have a place for storage. Again, 1 in 5 Americans will turn to self-storage for, at one point in their life, to store their goods and items. And maintaining that safe and attractive residential environment, this is not a better site for residential, it's a better site for non-residential, given its location, and I believe through site plan design criteria, we can provide the appropriate screening and landscaping to minimize any impact from this development on this property. The master plan also talks about providing Franklin Township with a broad-based economic foundation to expand opportunities for commercial and industrial development that complement the town's rural character at defined locations in appropriate zoning districts, and to encourage a sound fiscal mix of future uses. This location, while not directly on Delsey Drive, but just off Delsey Drive, provides an opportunity for that mix of uses in your village corridor area that would service the residents in the surrounding area and improve the community in terms of providing that additional service. Also, investing into that area where you have this abandoned building across the street will maybe add some investment into the area as well. For those reasons, I don't believe there's a substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance or the master plan in terms of this proposed use on this property. Self-storage itself has come a long way. It has changed and grown and become a very desired and sought-after type of use for people who need to have access to it. And so, I believe this location, given the unique features of this property, if looked at in conjunction with your master plan, which is due for reexamination, would make sense to consider some type of low-intensity non-residential use on Old Delsey Drive. In terms of will there be a substantial detriment to the public good, and this is the last part of the testimony for the application. Again, this is a low-intensity use. We have one employee. We will have office hours. Our office hours will be 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So, it's not going to be, it's one employee, you're not going to have multiple people in and out of the property. I went through the traffic generation estimates based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers. 24 trips a day, on average, that's 12 vehicles, is not a high-intensity overflowing of traffic. You don't have people in and out, and we can address whether or not we need to address the 24 hours. We can talk about with Mr. Salerno to see if during site plan, we can adjust that. But by reorienting the buildings the way we are showing you for our future site plan application, it would create a better screen and buffer to the residential area, and all activity would then be closer to the front of the property instead of the rear of the property where the residents are, on Richmond Street. Lighting would be addressed in accordance with your ordinance. They would be generally building mounted lighting, except where the general parking is closer to the office, so you wouldn't have high light levels on the property as well. Those aspects of this use, which are unique to this use, are why it helps to not cause a substantial detriment to the public good. Again, not all non-residential uses make sense on this property, but one that doesn't have extreme impact to the surrounding area and provides a service to the community, and a needed service to the community based on the market standards and the market trends for self-storage facilities, I think is appropriate. I believe that it's particularly suited, advances those purposes of zoning, as I referenced, and that the benefits of providing some type of development on this property that is consistent with the surrounding area far outweigh the detriments that would occur from this. And many of those detriments, if we are going to talk about the impact to the residential area in terms of site plan design and buffering, can be addressed through a site plan approval. And that is what I have.
Is it going to get asphalt?
Yes, there will be paved drive aisles.
The whole thing will be paved?
Around the buildings for drive aisle access, yes.
That's the whole thing?
Well, no, we propose stormwater basins around the property as well.
Yeah, I got that.
So...
Dave, you want to go through the report?
Certainly, Chairman.
After the public.
That is good. We did a report, April 1st, of which Mrs. Morrissey has jumped into and has addressed a lot of the items as contained within it. But to reiterate, commercial development is not permitted on this road, and our ordinance doesn't specifically permit self-storage in this zone. So that's the hurdle we're up against. There was that other variance about a manager on-site, living on-site, which triggered another variance of two principal uses on-site. That's much lesser standard, much lesser of an issue to me. There's pros and cons to that. You know, if you've got somebody on-site keeping an eye on it, that may actually be helpful. But the advocate has removed that from the application. What I didn't hear, or I missed it, was hours of operation. Did you tell me it's 24/7?
Well, what we have is, the office will be 8 to 4. Lot of facilities are 24/7, however, we can limit that if we need to do that. I don't have a problem with that.
It'd be nice to know what we were...
I would say somewhere is around, we could do like a 6 to 10, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
So it's an automated facility somewhat?
Yeah, we'll have an automatic gate.
Office closes at 4, and I could come and go as I please?
Yes, with a gate, a key, yes, sir.
If we limit the hours, the key wouldn't work after those hours.
Mrs. Morrissey, you indicated the height of the structures would be no more than 10 feet high?
About 10 feet.
About. The pictures that you provided in one of the exhibits indicates a two-story building in Mount Efrain. That's not what you're proposing?
No, no two stories, sir.
Just wanted to be clear.
Yes, that does depict that one I did build that had a two-story building. This will not.
So, the site plan is a whole other different animal, right? We're just talking about this evening, is this a good fit for this area? Is a self-storage what we think is appropriate for this area? Site plan is going to put a lot of constraints on this concept plan that you have here. You know, we've got significant buffer requirements in this zone. Mrs. Morrissey, you know, indicated stormwater management standards will likely make these basins larger than you have shown on this plan. We've got extensive landscaping you're going to have to deal with, and we've got setbacks to driveways that you're going to have to deal with also. So there's a lot of other hoops, a lot of other issues that are going to have to be resolved if this gets to site plan issue, gets to the site plan step, which is next, if this gets approved. You heard the testimony, this is somewhere between a residential and an intensive commercial use. It's commercial use for sure, has limited trips. The question is, is it a good fit for our neighborhood? Really have nothing further in that engineering review, because it's only limited to the use.
You will at site plan?
Significant.
I can see that. Any comments to the engineer, or are you...
No, I think everything's been satisfied.
If I may, the only thing I would inquire, Mr. Chairman members, and to the general is, are we, we're still talking about nobody on-site 24/7, all right? Or is that what the board would like to say?
That's what you said.
Well, we presume that the board doesn't want anybody living there, and that then that kind of makes the application simpler, less complicated, and there's no...
Well, I think Mr. Tannen just said, you know, it's pros and cons of both.
Okay, well, we're going to stand where we are then, which is no one living there. So, I think that makes sense. Most of these places are all card access now, anyway.
Okay, let's open this up to the public?
I make the motion, we open the public.
By David Cesare?
Second.
Segue, I must a little favor. Aye. Oppose. Okay, anybody from the public that you heard regarding the self-storage facility in the Malaga Village?
Steve Marshall, 67 New Road, do I need to be sworn in?
Say that into the mic, please. Raise your right hand. Are you sure to tell truth about testimony you're going to give?
I do. David Marshall, 67 New Road, Malaga.
Thank you.
All of you should have gotten some emails that I sent out about some flooding issues we have in Malaga, and I'll give you a little bit of history of that for how long we've lived there. When Matthews Plaza was built, the retention basin, which used to be across from Caluchia Lumber, is consistently full now, and that was when Matthews Plaza was built. When Caluchia Lumber left and the Dollar Street came in, the impervious service area increased considerably, and now that retention basin overflows every time it rains. Most of the time, right on the Delsey Drive, it floods the field behind it, and our street, you know, gets flooded, which is 67 New Road. It goes all the way down, and it's bad. Since the impervious service was increased at New Field Bank not too long ago, the stream behind us, which is the one that parallels the bank parking lot, floods, as you can see from some of the pictures and videos I sent in, that actually fills our woods behind us, comes all the way into our yard now. We are now taking water in our basement that never happened before. And that's not just me, that's almost everybody along New Road. This type of coverage increase, as you have brought up, Mr. Iglesias, about most of it being paved, would be a nightmare for our community. It would create nothing but more flooding issues. We have nowhere to catch up water, and yes, you can put it in a retention basin, but there's no trees to absorb it at that point. It still goes back into groundwater and brings the perk up, which is what's happening in our basements now. It can't happen. It's just too much of a nightmare to deal with as a resident, which we never had to deal with it before, till each of these businesses keeps getting approved in our area. Malaga Village does not handle this type of business as it was brought up. It's not part of it, it shouldn't be part of it, and yes, it is in between two main roads, but if you look at New Road and Defiance, so is my house. It has Route 40 on one side and has 47 on the other side, so if that's one of our arguments, that doesn't work. She also said it was surrounded by commercial properties. Well, surrounded means encompass completely. Richmond is not commercial, so it is not surrounded. Yes, it has a little bit of frontage and some properties on each side, a church on one side with a parsonage, and a house on the other side, which does have frontage along Delsey Drive. So there is a little bit of coverage there. To say it's commercial, but surrounded is not the right term for that. If you look at our different land uses and our different items that are there, I don't have to go word-for-word for it, but if you look at some of the ones there, I mean, in Section 250, 350, Section 22 has about 18 sections about what landscaping and buffering should be on that property for this business. If you follow even the minimum guidelines there, they're not going to have room for one public storage building, as long as you adhere to the standards that our township has. If you look at 250 through 102, which is where the buffering mandates come in. Again, it would limit it to one building if you follow the minimum guidelines. I don't know how profitable that'd be, but it still comes down to where it's just not a suitable area. I still have a little time left for where we're at.
Is that all woods?
It's, there's a house on it that they talked about, that was the one that's there. Prior to that, it's all overgrown, going up to Richmond, so there's a swath of woods there, and then on the New Road side, which borders the houses that are right on there, and I can give you a block of wood on that side. Not dense, but it's woods.
It's just all...
Thank you.
Don't leave yet, Mr. Morrissey. Just to clarify, whatever you may have sent in, they can't really consider, they can just consider what you're saying tonight, which I think was very clear regarding the drainage in the different areas, but before that, consider what is presented tonight, so the applicant can hear it and so forth, so I think you made clear what the drainage issues were and where they are.
So, for a future meeting, am I allowed to cast it onto the TV?
If you came in and you wanted to show something, you can show something.
Right.
You would have to bring your own laptop to look it up.
Oh, that's, yeah, but I'm just wanting to see if that was allowed, that'd be...
Yeah, we just can't allow any applicants to use our laptop.
No, I understand. Yep, not a problem.
But, yeah, we have the HDMI cable.
Okay. Just, what do they ask, because that would be a lot easier.
Anyone else like to be heard? Please come forward. Please go forward. Raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
Swear to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
I do.
Name and address.
Cindy Merks, 330 Oak Avenue, Malaga. I have one question on well and septic. In this type of property, there will be facilities, I didn't hear her say anything about that, but I know you said retention, ponds and everything else.
Has to be somewhere.
I mean, on an acre ground, most of us, that's what we have in our thing, so I didn't know if that's going to be included on that acre, well and septic. Is there a...
Yes.
There is.
There's a well and septic.
But you're going to have an office, so I'm assuming that's going to be all in that too.
So I think one and a half acres, but...
One and a half acres. I have one and a half acres, but I don't know how I could put all that on my one and a half acres of the swimming pool, couple of other things. I'm looking at the swimming pool as one thing, but you know what I mean. The other thing I just want to say, I feel bad for the people who live in the residence around there. I wouldn't want it in my backyard, and I'm going to tell you why. Because owning a newspaper, before I owned my own newspaper, I also went to a lot of storage facilities. And you know why? Because in the middle of the night, that's where they drop them off, in storage facilities. And a lot of times, we pick them up there. So they get dropped off at 2:00 by the truck, and then the carriers pick them up, and I worked for the Courier Post, and I worked for the South Jersey Times, that's where you pick them up. And I know that residents probably won't want somebody there at 2:00 and 4:00 in the morning. Sometimes that might be when they can get the card access to get in there and out of there, just to use that facility, because if you're headed south in different areas, those things are easy places to pick up. And we used to pick ours up at different places. So, you know, it will affect the people who live behind there. And it's a historical district. That's why all the years that we always looked at these areas, we wanted to keep the villages like Franklinville and Malaga really close so that the people that had their homes there, and they were historical, like the churches that are 100 years old around them. So that's kind of why we never really didn't want it to become too over-commercialized. Thank you.
Well put, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
I do. Barbara Halpern, Harding Highway. I assume the buildings will be heated with fossil fuels to maintain heating and cooling in them. Those units will make noise and have air pollution. There is no control if people, like Cindy said, want to use these units for commercial purposes, which would increase the number of trips that they would be going there. I had a friend who used a unit because she was selling clothes that she would buy at garage sales, she would sell them at eBay, and she needed a place to organize them and work on them, and she would go every day and work on the clothes and, you know, pack the clothes, and she was running a business out of there. And people will do that. They have no control over what people store there, how often they're going to go there, and whether they're going to use it for personal or commercial uses. This will cause light pollution, noise pollution, and air pollution with inadequate buffers to the neighbors, and I wouldn't want to live next to this. It's not allowed in the zone, as you know, and it's on a side street that, yeah, it may be potential for those houses next to it to become commercial, but as someone who lives in a highway commercial zone, my area will never be commercial. These homes, my home was built in 1920s, moved to where I live in the 40s from across the street. I've been living there for well over 30 years now, and all of my neighbors as well. It's affordable housing, it's good housing, people love their homes, even if they're on 47 or 40. So to assume that, oh, yeah, this is a commercial area, well, we're changing the master plan, and they're meeting now, and I attend all the meetings. And part of that is to allow residents to remain residential, not be in non-conforming use in those zones. I don't know if it'll include this district, but it will include my district, the Harding Highway area of highway commercial. They're going to ask that everyone make it acceptable that we have homes, so we don't need to come for a variance, and we can make improvements on our homes, which at this point, we're deterred from doing that because our zoning was changed, mine was changed from residential when I bought it, to highway commercial. There's a pool, I understand, right there, and people are going to be driving in right by this person's enjoyable part of their yard. If you look at this plan, the access road, you know, goes right by this person's pool, and every vehicle is going to have to go through there night or day. These people that live around it, basically, this is terrible. There's too much on this plan. The site is not well-suited for this because it is too small for what's being proposed. And also, part of the master plan changes are going to be to get rid of this, oh, you can put a fence in rather than the full buffer. It's not appropriate to take someone's peaceful enjoyment away from them when they're paying good taxes for their homes that they've lived in for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halpern. Anyone else like to be heard? Please go forward. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
I do. Leslie Pender, 85 New Road, Malaga. I have to disagree with these people here. As a resident of that neighborhood, I implore you to not even consider this. You're all here for a reason because you're all businessmen and understand what a horrible idea this is. Please don't forget about the residents there. We already flood continually. Our backyard is soggy. The Dollar Store, you know, the one down the street from the other Dollar Store, that we really need it because the world needs another Dollar Store. And correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't they building a self-storage when you come out on Delsey Drive, out of Malaga Park Drive? Aren't they building, I know it's taken quite a time, but aren't they building one right there?
There are.
Okay. And there's one five minutes down the road in Vineland. We don't need another self-storage. I implore you, for all the reasons these other residents said, for the flooding, for the fact that you can't control what goes on in and out of there, and we already have the traffic that we have just because of that Dollar Store, as people fly through our tiny neighborhood, please don't forget about us, and please do not forsake us. Please do not even consider this rubbish. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening. Chris Sayers, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard.
Swear to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
Yes, I do.
Your name and handle?
Chris Sayers, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard. Again, I'd just like to reiterate what a lot of the other residents have been saying about this proposed development. You know, I've always been one to advocate for the master plan, which the professional did correctly state that development should be directed towards Malaga Village, Franklinville Village. But one important caveat to that is the need for necessary buffers that actually separate specific zones. And from looking at the map and the plan, I don't see any space whatsoever for any possible buffer between the semi-commercial area that they want to build on and the residential area of the street right next door. So unfortunately, I just feel like this property is just completely too small, again, for the above-mentioned reasons. Again, also, I've also experienced the flooding in that area, and if that's going to be asphalted completely over and built on completely, except for the narrow drainage ditches that they have, I just don't see anywhere that we can possibly have the proper water drainage necessary for the site. And lastly, I know it was important, in order to get these variances, you need positive criteria and negative criteria. And one thing that the professional said to me, which kind of stood out, was, I believe she said, and I might have misheard, so correct me if I'm wrong, but she said that one of the positive criteria was that the property provided sufficient space. I didn't know if that was a slip of the tongue or not. It certainly doesn't look like, from my layman's eyes, that it provides near enough space for anything. So, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Anyone else from the public? Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
I do. Lou DiToli, 45 New Road. To everyone's point, our area does flood, but before I moved to Malaga in 2020, and I love the area because it is rural, I moved from Gloucester Township, and I'm so glad that I did, and when I go back there to visit my mother, it makes me love where I live even more.
Coming back to God's country.
That's right. But with this proposal, it will soon become Gloucester Township. That's the direction that it's moving in. We'll lose our rural status and become a suburb. But what I came up here for, I just wanted to mention that before I moved here with my wife and daughter, we had our stuff in storage for three years. And sure, we went every once in a while, but every time we went, there were guys running businesses that were sellers on Amazon. The guy, I got to know the guy, he was one unit away from mine. He was boxing things up almost every day. Every time he got an order from Amazon, boom, he would go there. And he plays his radio, people have fans going, a guy's working on his motorcycle in another unit. There was actually an auto mechanic, or the guy has his car stored there, and he tinkers with it every single day like it's a garage. So when she said that, you know, one in five people, you know, love to store their things once in their lifetime at a storage unit, and occasionally visit it to get Christmas things, well, that's just splitting hairs. I mean, that may be true of some, but not all.
And we can't assume that's all going to be bad as well.
Right. And more flooding, light pollution, and who knows what else? And, yeah, it's close to Delsey Drive, it's close to being in that commercial zone, but not. So, please, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
Yes. Janet Given, 108 New Road. I moved in there about nine years ago, and I've had, I didn't start out with flooding, but when they started changing things, Dollar General, all these things, I now have flooding in my basement. I have a French drain and a sump pump. And I also have a little girl who is being affected by the mold growing in my basement. It doesn't matter what I do, it just keeps coming. So the fact that you guys are okay up there with letting all of our basements flood all of the time, it's just not fair. What if it was your house?
Excuse me, what street do you live on?
I live on New Road and Defiance. I live on the corner.
I didn't hear that.
Sorry. It just, no, I don't have any facts or anything, but it's just sad that you guys just really don't care about our little neighborhood, and you're going to, hopefully...
You didn't vote yet.
I know, but hopefully you care enough, excuse me.
Make an assumption.
Hopefully you care enough to hear our pleas about all this water that we're dealing with consistently.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? I make a motion, we oppose the public portion by Dan DeCesare. His second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, Mr. Alson, true.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman members, I just want to jump in on one thing. Mr. Foley said, which is important about, so, at one point, I did live in a city, and there was a place called Jerry's Corner, which was in southwest Philly, and it was a bit of one of those like bazaars, a strange place where all manner of thing occurs. So I assure you, we absolutely will have limitations on what people may do there. In fact, most storage facilities very much control what may be stored and what activities may occur there. Obviously, no one is welcome to repair their automobile or any vehicle, or run any business. It's illegal. You have a zoning ordinance. It's not going to be permitted there. We don't want it, you don't want it. You also don't want hazardous materials stored there, chemicals, any kinds of problems. So this is typical in the business to have these limitations placed in the leases, and that's also why you have office hours and you have someone on-site, so you know what's what. And that's also why you have cameras, so those people can be thrown out. Entirely unacceptable. When I hear stories like Mr. Foley related, it really is troubling and quite unfortunate, and frankly, not up to the standards of what an operator today is tasked with doing. So, that's one of the things. Obviously, there's concern generally, and my experience, and I've been at this a little bit, is water management, stormwater management. It's not just in Franklin, it's the state of New Jersey. You well know, because you have quality professionals, that the DEP is messing with those stormwater regs, and it looks like every two years, we've got a new set of regs, and every six months, they're tweaking them, and so it's a moving target. But life in a big city, we have to meet those stormwater regs. They talk about water purity or quality that's actually being discharged, they talk about, you know, the perks, how quickly it is back into the ground. So all those standards, which were just changed recently, are our burden. So if we don't meet those standards, we don't have a project. We wouldn't have a project, and we wouldn't tell you that we want to have a project. We've done some preliminary investigation, and I believe it works. So that's that. So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, are there some additional questions raised by perhaps the public or someone else, or that just occurred to anyone that you would like us to address?
I don't have any questions anymore. Do you, gentlemen, have any more questions? Should the applicant, the owner, the engineer, guess the answer to that?
Well, thank you. You've been most kind, most patient, and we very much appreciate the consideration. So respectfully, we do ask for the grant of the use variance contingent on site plan review for this, what I would describe as a modest self-storage facility. And thank you again.
Thank you. It was a good presentation. Okay. You heard from the public, you heard the testimony. Remember, this is just strictly for the use, not for...
I was going to say, isn't it kind of sort of the courtship for the horse without seeing...
Well, that's why they...
The site plan, right? That's why, I guess.
Conceptual kind of thing, so you have some idea.
Right, that's what you have. You know, they're planning on 15, 16,000 square foot of storage.
Might not work out.
Like this.
Right.
And, you know, that's all we have to think about when you're trying to determine if this is a good use for this location.
With a site suitable, that goes to the site suitability.
Right.
Whether with the buffers and the well stuff they can set, or whether it's a piece of building.
Right. And that all enters into under site plan review, which would be a next step.
I make a motion, we deny it. Motion by Dan DeCesare. All second. Seconded by Richard Iglesias. Motion to deny, DeCesare.
So a yes would be to deny.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
Mr.?
No.
Sorry.
I don't believe this thing's going to fit in that neighborhood. I would not want to live near it. If there's a water problem now, there's going to be a bigger water problem, so I'm not, that's why I'm voting yes.
Mr. DeCesare?
Yes, and for the same reason Mr. Iglesias, that if we could have seen the site plan maybe a little bit different, but I don't believe all this can fit, or even half of that can fit on a 1.2 acre, one and a half acre.
Mr. Leo?
I agree.
Yes.
Mr. Felizi?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Greer?
Yes, I mean, not only does it fit, but it's just not fair for the residents that have lived behind it alongside of it.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again. You've been most kind, most patient, and do appreciate the consideration. I hope you figure out the water thing, and if I need a Dollar General, I know where to come. So you all stay well. Thank you.
Next, our agenda is ED 2405, Kenneth and Denise Danter. Please come forward. Take care, man. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
199 Blackwood Avenue, Franklinville.
Name?
Kenneth Danter.
Denise Danter.
Mike, everything in order?
Yes.
Ken, Denise?
We're looking...
Why don't you explain to me what you're looking to do?
We're looking to put an addition on our house, trying to get a variance. We have an 80-foot frontage, and in the area that we're at, they require a 100-foot frontage, and we're trying to get a variance to put a 12-foot addition off the side of the house.
And obviously, you can't come out the other side of the house.
Correct.
For it.
Correct.
I could see that. Yep. Any questions about this? This is pretty simple. I make a motion, we open the public. Motion by Dana DeCesare. Seconded by Richard Lacyus. All in favor? Aye. Propose. Anybody from the public like to be heard with this application?
I make a motion, we close the public portion. Motion by Dana DeCesare. Seconded by Richard Lacyus.
I make a motion to approve.
No approval. Seconded. Which we knew were approving. With an 80-foot set back with the variance on.
A motion to approve by Dana.
80-foot set back, it's been there for 100 years.
Is this seconded by Russell Leo? Or Justin? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
Mr.?
Do you have extra or no?
Mr. DeCesare?
Yeah, I have one more.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Felici?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Greer?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ZB 2409, Christie and Mercado. All papers in order, Mike?
Yes, they are.
Raise your right hand, please, and swear to tell the truth about the test area again.
Yes, I do.
Name and address, please.
Christie Mercado, 2720 South Darian Street, Philadelphia, PA. I'm just looking for my notes.
Okay, Christie, what are you asking for here?
So basically, I'm here tonight to ask for a variance for a property I purchased in 2021 to build a single-family residence for myself. I need, currently, the frontage is 30 feet. I need 30 feet. I only have 20.
You're shy of frontage? You're shy of 20, isn't it? Correct.
Yes. Frontage is 130. I'm sorry, I have 150. Requires 150. I have 130, sorry.
What are other houses in the area there, like?
I'm sorry, the houses what?
Other houses there, are they, are their frontage close to yours, or are they all undersized frontage?
So from me driving by and being at the property, I have a home on the right and the left. The one to the right of me is kind of smaller than the one on the left of me. But you guys should have all the site plans and all of the paperwork I have sent to Denise and the engine...
It's Frye's Mill, right?
Okay, that one doesn't show us anything.
So the properties to the right, immediately to it is property is 140 feet of frontage?
Lot 23, you're saying?
Lot 23. The next one, Lot 22.02, to the right is 160, then 213, then 206. So the further you go to the right, the wider the lots are. This one is 130, it requires 150, but if you start going to the left, immediately next door is 118, then 80, then 132, and then 135. This is like the breaking point between the width of the lots.
And there's no property there to be purchased to make your property wider? There's homes on both sides?
Currently, not that I'm aware of. What? For me to purchase? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Is there a home on each side of the property? I asked you to buy additional property.
Correct.
In other words, next door neighbors?
Neighbors.
Yes, I have two neighbors on each side.
And each one of those lots are under width. There's no extra width on either side.
Okay, any questions for the...
It's also an undersized lot.
It's also an undersized lot?
Yes.
And...
And under width. Undersized lot. You need 1.5 acres in this zone, it's 1.42.
Oh, wow.
But it is a variance.
You're a bad man.
I just wanted to make sure that we understood.
Now, did you send the letters to your adjoining property owners, asking them the questions about purchasing or selling?
Yes.
Yes.
Everything has been said.
And you can't make, you can't make them more undersized on either side.
And you didn't get a response, a positive response?
No.
Okay. What do you plan on doing with that property? Of an house?
Yes, I want to build a single-family home.
For you?
For myself, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Good job in the city.
Definitely, definitely. I'm tired of this city already. I need some peace and quiet.
Maybe too quiet for you?
No, I actually want it. I actually went and looked at another property too down here. But I like Franklinville, it's very quiet.
I make a motion, we'll put it up second.
Motion by Russell Leo. Seconded by Dana DeCesare. All in favor? Aye. Propose. Okay, anybody from the public like to be heard regarding this? Please come forward.
The whole right hand, nothing does work.
I do.
My name's Adam Klein. I live at 1090 Frye's Mill. I'm actually soon to be buying 1084 Frye's Mill, which is her neighbor, so I'm both neighbors. I didn't actually get anything in the mail asking for a purchase of the property. I can't help her with the frontage, but I own 33 acres. I think I would have known if I got something in the mail asking to buy a tenth of an acre. Basically, my issue is, you guys are trying to do a variance. If you choose to be a variance, that's fine, but it does, it's two variances. It's for the frontage and the size. Basically, my only issue is that, you know, you guys put up the law that, or the ordinance that you wanted to make sure we're more rural, bring another house in. Yes, the other houses are small frontage, I'm aware of that, but how, what year were those houses built? We're now asking to put a brand-new house in, so it's a little bit different. That's kind of really all I have.
They really can't get any more frontage?
They cannot. But they, but the thing that kind of was surprising when you would ask, did you reach out to any of the other people at the property for the other acreage, so to meet that other variance? And she said, yes.
That's very close.
It is close, but it's not, if you go to a store and you only have 14 bucks and it's a $15 bill?
True. Are you adjacent to this?
I own all the land behind the property, so...
Behind this property?
Yes.
Not on the sides?
The, I will. I'm purchasing 1084, so I will be adjacent.
So whoever owned 1084 got the letter, because they're the current owner.
But yeah, but the, behind, I did not get the letter for asking about the purchase of the property. So again, it's, ultimately, I'm not trying to stop her, you know, I don't know her, so maybe she's a great person. I'm just basically doing due diligence and, you know, if it meets the criteria, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yes.
Anyone else like to be heard? Motion to propose a... I make a motion, we close. This is seconded. Seconded by Richard Lacyus. All in favor? Aye. I oppose.
Wait, who made the motion?
Me. Dana. Seconded by Rick. Okay, the motion approves ZB 2409. This is seconded for two variance, frontage and acreage. Okay, motion is seconded. That's right. Any chance?
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes. This will put, actually, this is going to hurt the neighborhood, but the amount of, with our variance, there's nothing, so that's my guess.
Mr. DeCesare?
Yeah.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Felici?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Greer?
Yes, I mean, not only does it fit, but it's just not fair for the residents that have lived behind it or alongside of it.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again. You've been most kind, most patient, and do appreciate the consideration. I hope you figure out the water thing, and if I need a Dollar General, I know where to come. So you all stay well. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, ZB 2405, Kenneth and Denise Danter. Please come forward. Take care, man. Raise your right hand, please, and swear to tell the truth about the test area again.
Yes, I do.
Name and address, please.
Christie Mercado, 2720 South Darian Street, Philadelphia, PA. I'm just looking for my notes.
Okay, Christie, what are you asking for here?
So basically, I'm here tonight to ask for a variance for a property I purchased in 2021 to build a single-family residence for myself. I need, currently, the frontage is 30 feet. I need 30 feet. I only have 20.
You're shy of frontage? You're shy of 20, isn't it? Correct.
Yes. Frontage is 130. I'm sorry, I have 150. Requires 150. I have 130, sorry.
What are other houses in the area there, like?
I'm sorry, the houses what?
Other houses there, are they, are their frontage close to yours, or are they all undersized frontage?
So from me driving by and being at the property, I have a home on the right and the left. The one to the right of me is kind of smaller than the one on the left of me. But you guys should have all the site plans and all of the paperwork I have sent to Denise and the engine...
It's Frye's Mill, right?
Okay, that one doesn't show us anything.
So the properties to the right, immediately to it is property is 140 feet of frontage?
Lot 23, you're saying?
Lot 23. The next one, Lot 22.02, to the right is 160, then 213, then 206. So the further you go to the right, the wider the lots are. This one is 130, it requires 150, but if you start going to the left, immediately next door is 118, then 80, then 132, and then 135. This is like the breaking point between the width of the lots.
And there's no property there to be purchased to make your property wider? There's homes on both sides?
Currently, not that I'm aware of. What?
He's asking if there's two homes on the...
For me to purchase? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Is there a home on each side of the property? I asked you to buy additional property.
Correct.
In other words, next door neighbors?
Neighbors.
Yes, I have two neighbors on each side.
And each one of those lots are under width. There's no extra width on either side.
Okay, any questions for the...
It's also an undersized lot.
It's also an undersized lot?
Yes.
And...
And under width. Undersized lot. You need 1.5 acres in this zone, it's 1.42.
Oh, wow.
But it is a variance.
You're a bad man.
I just wanted to make sure that we understood.
You're in trouble now. Now, did you send the letters to your adjoining property owners, asking them the questions about purchasing or selling?
Yes. Everything has been said.
And you can't make, you can't make them more undersized on either side.
And you didn't get a response, a positive response?
No.
Okay. What do you plan on doing with that property? Of an house?
Yes, I want to build a single-family home.
For you?
For myself, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Good job in the city.
Definitely, definitely. I'm tired of this city already. I need some peace and quiet.
Maybe too quiet for you?
No, I actually want it. I actually went and looked at another property too down here. But I like Franklinville, it's very quiet.
I make a motion, we'll put it up second.
Motion by Russell Leo. Seconded by Dana DeCesare. All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Okay, anybody from the public like to be heard regarding this? Please come forward.
The whole right hand, nothing does work.
I swear to tell the truth about the test area again.
I do. My name's Adam Klein. I live at 1090 Frye's Mill. I'm actually soon to be buying 1084 Frye's Mill, which is her neighbor, so I'm both neighbors. I didn't actually get anything in the mail asking for a purchase of the property. I can't help her with the frontage, but I own 33 acres. I think I would have known if I got something in the mail asking to buy a tenth of an acre. Basically, my issue is, you guys are trying to do a variance. If you choose to be a variance, that's fine, but it does, it's two variances. It's for the frontage and the size. Basically, my only issue is that, you know, you guys put up the law that, or the ordinance that you wanted to make sure we're more rural, bring another house in. Yes, the other houses are small frontage, I'm aware of that, but how, what year were those houses built? We're now asking to put a brand-new house in, so it's a little bit different. That's kind of really all I have.
They really can't get any more frontage?
They cannot. But they, but the thing that kind of was surprising when you would ask, did you reach out to any of the other people at the property for the other acreage, so to meet that other variance? And she said, yes.
That's very close.
It is close, but it's not, if you go to a store and you only have 14 bucks and it's a $15 bill?
True. Are you adjacent to this?
I own all the land behind the property, so...
Behind this property?
Yes.
Not on the sides?
The, I will. I'm purchasing 1084, so I will be adjacent.
So whoever owned 1084 got the letter, because they're the current owner.
But yeah, but the, behind, I did not get the letter for asking about the purchase of the property. So again, it's, ultimately, I'm not trying to stop her, you know, I don't know her, so maybe she's a great person. I'm just basically doing due diligence and, you know, if it meets the criteria, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yes.
Anyone else like to be heard? Motion to propose a... I make a motion, we close. This is seconded. Seconded by Richard Lacyus. All in favor? Aye. I oppose.
Wait, who made the motion?
Me. Dana. Seconded by Rick. Okay, the motion approves ZB 2409. This is seconded for two variance, frontage and acreage. Okay, motion is seconded. That's right. Any chance?
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes. This will put, actually, this is going to hurt the neighborhood, but the amount of, with our variance, there's nothing, so that's my guess.
Mr. DeCesare?
Yeah.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Felici?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Chairman Greer?
Yes.
Okay, congrats.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for our panel. Welcome to the...
Thank you.
I'm going to scare you away.
No, no, no. I live in the city, so nothing's ever scary. Thank you.
Mike, we have other visitors here, right?
Yes.
State Dufield?
Thank you.
Extension of time?
Extension of time for the signing of the subdivision deeds.
Yes, for the get?
Yes.
You know the...
Yes, we have a letter.
Thank you.
Do you need the letter? I have it.
Yeah, let me just make sure we make it official here. So from Christopher DeSena, the attorney who appeared on the application, and yes, they are requesting, let's see how long they're requesting for extension to sign the subdivision deeds.
Oh, this is for the house, according to the rule?
Right. So I'm assuming that they had another 30 days of likely visa basis.
Yeah, I think 30 days is not sufficient for anything.
Okay.
When it comes to, is it engineering or law or something?
I hear you.
You think 30 days is going to hop on the hold or something? Engineering.
I make a motion, we end it for 90 days.
Yes. We don't come back again.
190 days?
90.
Just 90, right?
Yeah.
There's a motion, seconded by, a motion by Dana, seconded by Rich, I think. All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Extension of time?
Yeah. Okay, Tresca SJ LLC, Mike. Yeah, so this Tresca application, DeSaray brought to my attention, she had this application that was pending since August of '23. I don't know if you had a chance to review my memorandum. So it was submitted in August of '23 for a use variance and a waiver of site plan for storage of stowed vehicles and associated activities. Dave Shidde reviewed the application. It was discovered that the property was in an HC zone when he reviewed it. The documentation was available to you, showed it in an RA zone. I think it's fair to say that way. Right.
Yes.
But it turned out that it was in an HC zone. After that, the zoning officer did clarify the zone, but a use variance was still necessary. So even though there was a different zone, the end result was the same, they still needed the use variance. As a result of that, the applicant then said they may want to come for an interpretation instead of the use variance to see whether they needed a use variance. So at this point, we have Dave's letter from August of '23 deeming the application incomplete, and there's been no further activity. They haven't responded to that or filed an application. So we felt that we needed to do something with this, because we can't have this sitting on the books. They also were discussing whether they should have their escrow back, or whether there's too much escrow. I explained that that was not for the zoning board, we just have an application, we needed to address it in some fashion. So what I ultimately let the applicant know was that if they wanted to withdraw the current pending application and file a new or amended one, then the application fee and balance of escrow could be applied to the new application. If it's for interpretation only, then the escrow would need to be replenished. If they chose to file for interpretation and a use variance and a waiver of site plan, then they would have to pay the appropriate fees. I asked that they let us know before tonight what their intention was. I've heard nothing. Have you heard anything?
I checked my email, because I walked in.
So the recommendation is that, from me, is that you deny it without prejudice, gets it off the books. If they want to bring something back, they can bring it, and if the zoning officer wants to continue enforcement, they can do that.
Okay, the motion, I make a motion, deny ZB 2409. By Dana, seconded by Russell Leo. All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Any extensions to that? No. Anything else, Mike?
No.
We have the memorialization of the...
The victory of the revolution.
So we have just the one resolution, John Fennardo, trying to go structure detached the garage, which you approve?
I make a motion, we approve ZB 2409. Motion by Dana DeCesare. Seconded by Richard Lacyus. All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Any questions to that?
DeSaray is abandoning us, doesn't want to be part of zoning board anymore?
It's my last meeting. Christie Mulford will be taking over come June. She's helped me out here a couple of times, and she currently runs the planning board. She's the planning board secretary. So in an effort to help all of us work more efficiently over there, she is in that department. She works in zoning and construction. I work in finance, and I help with clerk duties, so it makes more sense for her to take this.
You've done a good job.
Thank you very much.
A lot of changes here all the time, seriously, you got it.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to streamline things, and, you know, we're trying to get everyone in a more efficient way.
Rich is right. You've done a great job, and you're sure you'll stay with us.
Thanks.
Okay, is there a secretary report?
Nope, that was all I had.
Then we have the resolution appointing.
I have a resolution. I didn't know if you wanted to do it this evening.
Yes, we'll do it now.
Christie can't be here, so...
Christina Mulford, you said?
Yes.
I make a motion, we appoint Christina Mulford. Motion by Dana DeCesare. Seconded by Richard Lacyus. All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Extension of time?
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
Okay. So Dave and Mr...